Please. First thing I need is a motion to adopt our agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda, one item on our agenda. I'm sorry, first thing, do we have any statements from patrons, Mr. Rep?
We do not.
Okay. Uh, one action item, and that is our tax rate hearing for the coming year. I would like to have a motion to approve our, uh, our taxes as two seventy-five for operating levy ninety cents for debt service. That is no change from last year.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Those, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We will continue this year with the no change in tax rate. That's the only action item we have. I'd like a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion?
I'll second.
And I have a second. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned from our tax rate hearing. Let me make a quick shift to our next meeting. Alright. This is our normal monthly board meeting. I'd like to call the August board meeting to order. First thing I need is a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion? Second, John? Okay. I have a second. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Have an agenda. Next on our agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Anyone like to stand? Anyone wearing a hat? Remove it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the district with capturing kids' hearts, we like to share good things that are happening within our district and our community. Anyone have anything, good things that they would like to share with everyone here?
It was great to see a lot of parents and students for open house, and just to see the exciting, the excitement on the kids' faces, well, their face masks, uh, to be back, and you can see it in their eyes, and, and so, we've been working really hard to responsibly reopen, and we're hopeful we're gonna have a great, great year, and we know we've done the work to be ready and excited for everything, so, next Tuesday, first day.
Okay. Anyone else? I'd like to recommend or note that the sports teams have been practicing, so we're, we're back to getting things back to as close to normal as we can. It's good to see all the kids out and, uh, working hard out there, uh, trying to be the best that they can, so. Anyone else? If not, we will continue on. Again, do we have any statements from patrons for this meeting, John?
None.
No statements from patrons, so, first, next item on the agenda is some introductions. Since we're starting a new year, we have quite a few new faces. I'm happy to see all of you here. Uh, building principals, we'd like you to introduce, so, Mr. Stammers, if you'd like to start?
I have two here, and four of your three students in the district, uh, two are here, and one of them is with the slash year of the year, and he has business to the law back. Tim Davis joins the act of market, and Gil Morton, who is from the special education department, so, the other one is Eric Lennix, who is at our history department, assuming, you know, if you want to have, you know, here in our state of all branches, so, yeah, two of the areas there, there are two.
Okay. Uh, moving on to middle school. Oh, there you are, Karen.
We have a small class here, so we have Gary Condon, she's a school president, um, she's kind of just a little, uh, principal, and we have Jillian Douglas, who is a campus, she's coming from, they go to high school, and Sarah Turner, she's right here, Sarah is coming from both of those schools.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the district with capturing kids' hearts, we like to share good things that are happening within our district and our community. Anyone have anything, good things that they would like to share with everyone here?
It was great to see a lot of parents and students for open house, and, uh, just to see the exciting, the excitement on the kids' faces, uh, well, their face masks, uh, to be back, and you can see it in their eyes, and, and, uh, so, we've been working really hard to responsibly reopen, and we're hopeful we're gonna have a great, great year, and we know we've done the work to be ready and excited for everything, so, next Tuesday, first day.
Okay. Anyone else? I'd like to recommend or note that the sports teams have been practicing, so we're, we're back to getting things back to as close to normal as we can. It's good to see all the kids out and, uh, working hard out there, uh, trying to be the best that they can, so. Anyone else? If not, we will continue on. Again, do we have any statements from patrons for this meeting, John?
None.
No statements from patrons, so, first, next item on the agenda is some introductions. Since we're starting a new year, we have quite a few new faces. I'm happy to see all of you here. Uh, building principals, we'd like you to introduce, so, Mr. Stammers, if you'd like to start?
I have two here, and four of your three students in the district, uh, two are here, and one of them is with the slash year of the year, and he has business to the law back. Tim Davis joins the act of market, and Gil Morton, who is from the special education department, so, the other one is Eric Lennix, who is at our history department, assuming, you know, if you want to have, you know, here in our state of all branches, so, yeah, two of the areas there, there are two.
Okay. Uh, moving on to middle school. Oh, there you are, Karen.
We have a small class here, so we have Gary Condon, she's a school president, um, she's kind of just a little, uh, principal, and we have Jillian Douglas, who is a campus, she's coming from, they go to high school, and Sarah Turner, she's right here, Sarah is coming from both of those schools. And she's coming from my, I mean, for all time, so. Ones. And we have no one, no.
Right.
And, um, she's just very fast, so. Ashley is, um.
Well, we did, we introduced our, uh, new super, assistant superintendent, Mr. Tim Webster, um, but not officially with the new staff, so yes, we have Mr. Tim Webster. That's your second time we introduced you, yeah. Now, Chris, you need, do you need everybody somewhere?
Yeah, I would like to get a picture. Um, if you're comfortable doing a great picture, we can do that. If not, we'll take you outside, it's very good.
That's, that's, that's fine. There's a couple, one, the count of three, one, two, three. Thank you guys. You can see my eyes. Welcome to the state.
Alright, we're gonna continue along. Next item is the consent agenda. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have some presentations. I think the first one up is Mr. Harland, talking about activities.
You're up. I was just moving seats.
That's what you get for moving, man.
Um, I appreciate you getting, giving a chance to come here and talk to you a little bit, uh, give you kind of a quick update on the start of school and the fall athletics and, and activities. Um, the numbers of participants, even though we're kind of in a unusual time, the number, overall numbers are way up. Uh, I'd probably say we're up fifteen percent more participants this year than we had last year. Uh, I think right now, if I'm going off the top of my head, I believe the band has seventy-four kids that are participating. Football has fifty-nine or sixty. Cross country's probably a little stable. I think they have, I want to say thirteen. Uh, middle school football, they started the other day, their numbers are probably about where they were last year. Softball, I believe, has twenty-seven this year. They're up a bunch of kids. And volleyball, we're gonna be able to have a freshman team this year, so I think they're up nine or ten kids. So overall, all the programs, the numbers of participation are way up this year, which is exciting, just, uh, you always like to see a lot of kids come out, and it just makes things a little more fun and interesting. We have, uh, moving on from that, I know, I know some people have some concerns about trying to get the kids back together and participate, and so, what we've come up with in, in lots of conversation with the school administration and the central office, we have, uh, kind of come up with a plan on what we feel is gonna be the, in the best interest of the students, and, and hopes of trying to secure a season. We want to get them as many games as we can and get them through the season as far as we can, so in order to do that, we felt like we needed to move in a direction where we had to have a little more control of the crowds and a little more control of the, uh, of the teams coming in, so we came up with a, uh, specs, spectator and facility guideline sheet, and, uh, basically what that means is we've got our, uh, for each contest or event that we'd hold, we have a, a tier level assigned to everything, and so based on how we feel things are going, we may jump up and down a, a tier level and restrict, be, become a little more restrictive on who we allow in the games, and if things are going pretty well, and things move in a more positive direction, then we'll get closer to opening up to a normal capacity and things like that, so, uh, we'll, I mean, we'll still have a good crowds at the games, I'm sure. I'm sure there'll be people who are frustrated, uh, not being able to get a ticket, but in order to be able to attend an event, you have to, uh, get a, a ticket voucher, and, uh, obviously, we want to make sure the, the participants, parents and families are able to get in and see their, see their kids perform, whatever activity it is, and so we, we are definitely gonna take care of them. Uh, their ticket vouchers will be given to their head coaches or directors, and then they'll be dispersed to the, to the players and, and participants themselves. We're gonna have tickets at the high school for high school students and staff who would like to attend the activities that we have. Uh, we'll have tickets for the middle school activities. I'll bring them over, and, uh, there'll be some of those, but to, uh, for their kids, but in order to be able to attend a, an app, an activity, whether it be an ac, a, a band, choir, or a sports activity, we're asking that the, the community will have the, in the, the community tickets will be available in the attendance office at the high school. So all you have to do is swing in there, grab a ticket, step right back out. It'll, it'll take a minute or less, um, and then they'll just be giving their tickets. We're gonna, we're gonna put a limit on that for each individual who shows up to get a ticket. There's gonna, there's gonna be a limit of two per person, so that we try and get, get as many tickets out as we possibly can, and so we're gonna run each one of our venues at a fifty percent capacity of what the maximum occupancy is, and, uh, so we've got that, uh, kind of figured out, and I've gone around taking the capacity limit for each, uh, facility, and so for football, we're looking, it'll be close to a thousand people a game. Uh, we normally run a little bit higher than that, um, but we, we are obviously gonna have to give the visiting teams a, a lot of the number of tickets, and so in meeting with the, uh, other conference A.D.s, we've come up with different numbers that, that I will be mailing to them weekly to, in order to, to be able to attend the games. So we've kind of gone through all that. Uh, we will be requiring, uh, mask at all indoor events, and the masks need to stay on, uh, when they're in, on the indoor events, so for volleyball and middle school girls' basketball right now, when you come to an event, you have to have your mask on, and you know, we're, we're gonna ask that you wear it inside the building. On the outdoor events, uh, specifically football, that's the, the one which is probably the most crowded, we're asking that, uh, all spectators, when they come to the game, they're gonna have to have, uh, if they want to sit in the large section of the permanent bleachers, that's a masked area. So if you're gonna sit in the, in the stadium itself, you're gonna have to wear a mask when you're there. Um, then outside that, since outside, the recommendation, if you can maintain some distancing, you can take your mask off, but if you, because a lot of people bring their own lawn chairs and set off to the side. If you're not in the main section of bleachers, and you can maintain distance, then we, you know, then we're okay if you're taking your mask off, but if you're gonna be in the main section of bleachers, we're gonna ask that you keep your mask on, so that kind of gives a, a, a variance for people who feel more comfortable wearing a mask, but it also gives people who feel that, you know, they can't breathe quite a well with it or anything, they have an area they can go to as long as they can maintain their social distancing and be able to remove the mask. Um, so that's kind of where we are with that sort of thing. With, uh, we've asked all the participants and their parents, we've, you know, we've asked them to sign some things indicating the situation that we're in and things like that, but generally, overall, I really feel like we've got a pretty good start to the year. Um, there's gonna be hurdles along the way, and, uh, our coaches are pretty resilient, and I feel like, you know, they're doing a really good job. When the kids get to practices, we're taking the kids' temperatures, uh, they're wiping down, and I, I know with the, at the football field house in particular, where it's got the, the largest amount of equipment, uh, Mr. DeLuca has provided us with a misting disinfectant machine, so all the equipment gets disinfected nightly after practice is over, so it's ready for him the next day, so between, uh, Mr. DeLuca and his maintenance and custodial staff, they've done a really good job of trying to keep things as clean as possible in order to give the kids the best chance to move forward with their season, but that's all I got. Thank you.
Um, Greg, I looked on the Four Rivers Conference, um, oh, I looked on the Four Rivers Conference. Are all the schools doing this, or are we requiring masks, or, um, is it kind of a recommendation by other schools?
Well, uh, when we met with the A.D.s, all schools in the conference have agreed upon guidelines, and so they're all implementing that for right now. Now, whether or not every school will stay with it, I can't answer that, but that's been what's been discussed, and all the, uh, the superintendents of the schools, principals, and the athletic directors all met about a week ago, and, uh, through about a three-hour discussion, came up with some guidelines, but we all, obviously, just like Misha would do, it was left to, uh, each individual, individual school, if you want to be more strict in certain areas, that's usually how it's worded, and so the minimum guidelines that I put out on the social media pages of the school, that's what the minimum guidelines were through the Four Rivers Conference, as far as venue capacity and things like that go, that's what was discussed and agreed upon, and that's what we'll be trying to implement as an agreement with the conference. Uh, masking, uh, I would say every school wanted mask in some variety. Some schools are, wear your mask in. When you get seated, you can take it off, and, uh, there's different things you do, which is similar to what we're doing with football. On the inside venue, we're gonna start with a mask on. I'd think that of the eight conference schools, three of them are requiring mask at all times on an indoor venue, and the other five were varying degrees of when you could take it off, when you couldn't take it off.
Okay, thanks.
How much monitoring are you doing on where our kids are traveling and kids that are traveling in as far as outbreaks and things like that?
Um, the, to answer the question, uh, that was a big piece of the communication. After we had the meeting with the superintendents and principals, the A.D.s met, then met again four days later, and that was a big point of commu, uh, topic was the communication, and it was very, it was spoken that, uh, as soon as somebody, one of the conference schools would, or any school of, of A.D.s that I'm more familiar with, they have all indicated that as soon as they would get a, a positive case, if that were to happen, they would notify, you know, upcoming games, and if they had played, you know, previously, with, I think they narrowed it down to the previous four days, uh, we kind of wanted to make a little bit bigger window, that they would notify us just in case, uh, so that, that is obviously the most important thing. Now, truth, and honestly, uh, we've heard of some other schools in our area that have had a faculty member or a player be tested positive, and we were notified, and the season per se, the, the competition part, it hasn't started yet, and they, and everybody's done exactly what they said they would do. Uh, some of them are teams that we didn't even play. We won't play until a different sports season, but they still notified. So I, I think people are very aware of what's going on and the, the concerns, you know, people have over it, and I think they've done their, everybody so far has done a real good job of communicating what's going on at their individual schools.
So, non-conference games will be following the same criteria in our school. Is it pretty similar with the other schools we're traveling to that are not in the Four Rivers? I mean, is the, is there some kind of standard that we're looking at?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question, because, um, I've been trying to get hold of, uh, a, a school that we're, I don't want to say it out loud. I've been trying to get information from a school that we have upcoming on our schedule, and they're at their board meeting tonight, and their board's gonna make decisions about that, so I should know that in the morning, but basically all the schools are doing something similar. Um, I, there's always a little bit of variation, but all the schools are doing that, uh, to answer your question, so like, we have, uh, football, for example, their first game is in, is on the road against Salem, and Salem's a non-conference school. That's one of the schools that's gonna be giving me some information, and, um, we may have different, where we're gonna have tickets for the visitors team here. For football, it's set at a maximum of two hundred and fifty. Uh, volleyball, be set at a maximum of seventy-five, uh, because of the venue space. Other school districts, they may not have those same criteria, so when we go to Salem, they may say, bring anybody you want, so, you know, they're gonna set the rules for their own, their own venue. They may not require masks. I don't know on some schools yet, although it, uh, I did get some information from a local school, Cuba, they're doing some things very similar to what we're doing. Um, and so those decisions are coming out quickly. I think a lot of school districts meet tonight, uh, their central offices, their school boards, so I'm sure a lot of information will be coming out the next day or two, but, uh, it seems to be working pretty good so far, and we're, we're just hoping that we can get the, uh, the kids through a good portion of the season healthy, truthfully. We don't, we hate to, uh, pull things away from them.
Uh, traveling, uh, to the, to these venues or back to our place, um, are we gonna have to, like, extra buses to fit everybody on them, like, with big, like, football, for instance?
Well, that's the, the, the million dollar question. How are we gonna get the kids there?
Yeah.
And so, um, we're gonna do, we're gonna try and distance kids as much as possible on the, uh, on the away trips. I would say most likely, football and band are probably the only two activities where the bus might get kind of crowded, and so we're looking at the, uh, number of traveling participants, um, so some of the younger kids who may not be able, playing in a varsity football game that night, they may not get to go to the away games. Um, we're, I'm trying to, if anybody would know somebody who'd be willing to look, to, to let us borrow a covered trailer, we're trying to find an individual who can take all of our football equipment on a trailer that would be going to the games anyway, and that would get all the equipment off of the bus, and then that would, uh, free up a sizable number of seats on each of the bus that we take, so we're in the process of doing that. I think we've got a couple people who might be interested in letting us borrow a trailer, so there's things like that we're taking into consideration. I know Copeland's Bus has also been in contact with Dr. Johnson and saying that they have, uh, they have a plan in place for when the kids, when the bus comes back to the, to the bus yard, that, you know, it's gonna be disinfected and things like that, and I know he's been in close contact with Copeland's Bus Service on that, so we're doing the best we can. Uh, kids are gonna be expected to wear a mask on the bus when they're traveling, so that'll probably be the biggest hurdle to overcome when you're dealing with junior high and, and high school kids, trying to keep them to, you know, cooperate in that regard. Anybody else? Well, I appreciate you, like, give me a few minutes to kind of keep you up to date on what we're doing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Not aimed at Greg, but how do we, how do we as a school district promote even at away games that it's not required for our fans to wear masks in a tight venue like football? How do we promote to our fans that, hey, this is how we keep a safe environment, this is how we keep our kids on the field by you wearing this mask? What's the best way for us to do that?
The best way is just to, you know, on our social media, and send out, you know, what, how, what our stance is as a district, is to model, uh, proper expectations and to be responsible, but when we, I mean, um, when we go to another place, I mean, it's like, like going to Walmart, you know?
We start pushing that now? I mean, i- is there a way to positively push that? I mean, I don't, you know, I don't want to force people, but I, I think that's the only way we're gonna keep these kids on the field.
Yeah, and well, and so our beginning of the year, you know, here, we've had our teachers, and we've been very responsible. I've seen pictures of other schools with their beginning of the year, uh, in services with their teachers, and, uh, by far, we had the most responsible, organized convocation. Uh, when I looked at other school districts and their teachers together closely without masks, you know, I think that we're being very proactive, and the message was from, starting with me and then all the principals, is that we're gonna model expectations as staff. We're modeling expectations, we're talking it, and we can, you know, continue to model, but then we can start putting stuff out there on social media, on what our expectations are, you know, once, once we get to another site, you know, our jurisdiction is, we, we can't do a whole lot other than our kids, you know, it's the same as going up to an adult at Walmart and, and getting on, getting on to them, you know, so we would hope that our community would take it serious. We want to educate our parents that they would take it serious, because our. We want to educate our parents that they would take it serious because our main goal is to keep our school doors open. You know, the sports are important, we want sports to happen. But if sports have to go away, that would happen first so that we could keep our school doors open, you know? So we can work on getting some really good positive messages out. Something that we can, Greg and principals and everybody can get out there, so.
Great job.
Good point.
I do think that the, I do think the coaches have been doing a respectable job with their kids. Expecting, you know, we're temperature checking and doing things like that. They're doing a respectable job of, they take, I've been down and kind of around some of the practices, and they're all getting their temperature taken. They're doing their best to enforce the mask policy. And I think it took a few days to kind of get into a groove with it because they hadn't, the kids hadn't been here. And when I was down at the football practice the other day, the kids were going in with a mask on. Now, did that hap, I'm not going to lie to you, did that happen the first couple of days? Two or three days? We had some stragglers coming in, we had to keep reminding them. And now that we're to the point we are now, it, when I was down there, it looked like the kids were all wearing their mask and they were doing it in volleyball. And softball was, they all seem to be cooperating and understand that's precaution that's going to hopefully help them get them, to allow them to compete.
Thanks for all the work.
Thank you, Greg. Next presentation we have is a discussion about the CARES Fund Grant. Josh Cahill. The Master Money Finder.
Right, so when it rains, it pours. So Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, all right? So this was a federal act that was passed, and it was a huge pot of money. And the federal government split up this money and sent it out everywhere because they didn't have the manpower to deal with it. So it went to the states, and the states did several things. One of the pieces came down through, as you can see in your spreadsheet. There is a 75% payment upfront that was directly from the state through the DESI payment system. And then there was another 25% payment that came later through the DESI payment system. But we also have a pot of money that actually came down that has been administered by MRPC, Merrimack Regional Planning Commission. So they allowed for people to apply for Phelps County CARES money. So we call it County CARES for short, just to make it simpler in our daily lives. And they made grants available. And you would apply for a grant. We were one of the first six entrants in applying for this grant. And our first application was for $44,000 and some change. Well, they said you can apply as many times as you want. So we are not going to go away empty-handed. We applied twice more, and we may apply again later on, depending on how that looks. So you'll see that there's, in the other two applications, there's one for 30 and some change. And I believe one looks like 110, but it was reduced to 106 and some change. And the reason that is, is we got new guidance about unemployment that came down from the state. So there was an additional 3,000 and change that got modified. The first application, I'm pleased to tell you, was actually vetted and approved. The county had been waiting to vet the money, waiting on additional guidance. And I met with the commission a couple of weeks ago and encouraged them to actually start the vetting process. And I'm happy to report that we have received our first check for the first application. So we still have the other two applications pending, and they look favorable. And if you're curious about that 110 that was reduced to 106,000, 60,000 of that is my fault specifically. It's wrapped up in what we call PandaCams, and that is our mass temperature scanning system. So what that's going to allow us to do is not have to have a handheld scanner that's going to bottleneck kids as they come in the door. We're going to try and make school as normal as possible. Now masks coming in, so the kids will come in. These will actually take the temperatures. It'll automatically do a green box or a red box. Red box means it's over 104. We have a protocol that would send them to the nurse. So unfortunately.
That's 100.4, right?
100.4. And there's going to be a more accurate scan that can actually be done. Did I say 104? Yeah, 100.4 is the threshold. And they'll actually do a more accurate scan at the nurse's office before we go into an isolation or quarantine procedure. So. Hopefully, they will sit down and do the next round of dispersment. And if not, I promise you, I'll go back to another commission meeting. Do you have any questions about the funds or the applications? Uh, there's.
And Josh has done a great job researching, and Susan's done an outstanding job keeping up with all the paperwork, so. Good team.
The auditing backside piece of this grant was actually very, very intensive. So the paperwork that Susan has put together has been absolutely critical for that, so.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh, appreciate all your help. Moving along to discussion topics. MSBA has released updates to policies, just numerous policies in there. I don't know how many of you have had a chance to review what's there? Got any questions? I encourage you to review it because there is a huge change to the sexual harassment policy that came out. Because there's new legislations on that. And believe me, it's complicated. There's going to be a lot of legal challenges that come up on that. Make sure we know what our policy is. And we, we as board members are designated as, what do we say, reporters? So if you hear of it, we have to report that. And we have to report it personally. We can't just tell Dr. Johnson and have him report it. So we need to know how to report that. Okay? And if there's no comments about the updates, we'll move along to action topics. The first one is our tuition rate. You can see we've been provided the calculation formula that Dr. Johnson used before. We've come up with a tuition rate of $5,639.75. I'd like a motion to approve that as our tuition rate.
I'll make the motion.
Motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one is the milk bid. I'd like to have a motion to approve the milk bid from Highland.
No move.
A motion?
Second.
And a second, discussion? Those in favor of approving Highland's milk bid, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Academic calendar modification. Dr. Johnson, if you'd just explain just a little bit on that before we have a motion.
So we were thinking about the calendar. And if we were to go into a closure due to COVID and be gone for two weeks, maybe three weeks, possibly, you know, you never know what it might be. I think that it would be a difficult sell to our community and to our parents to, on that first week back, on that Friday, we say, oh, and we're only going to go a half-day for PLCs. So what my proposal is, obviously, if there's no change, if we do not have any kind of closures, we wouldn't change anything. But if we do have an extended closure, however many Fridays we would miss, upon our return, we would go full days. We would obviously announce that and communicate that, you know, very active in letting all the parents know. I think they would, it would be well-received with most parents. But we would want to make sure that it doesn't confuse anybody. But if we were to miss three Fridays during the closure, then upon our return, the first three Fridays back will be full Fridays with no PLCs. And then on the fourth Friday, then we'd go back to the PLC early out schedule with tons of communication to the parents. And then we were then to go back into, like, we'd come back for four weeks and five weeks or whatever, and we're good, and we're in school. And then to have another extended closure, we just do the same thing. And I think people would understand that. I really think people are getting used to not, you know, just all kinds of different things. And I think this seems like a fair way to amend the calendar. Spoke to DESI about it, and they said that this is, if this is something that could be approved, if the board would approve this.
That's, I'd like a motion to approve these calendar amendments, the stipulations as to how we're going to modify calendar, if necessary.
I'll make the motion. I'll second the motion.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we do have a budget revision because we've had lots of changes to the grants and things that have occurred. Again, Dr. Johnson, you explained some of the pros and cons, mostly pros.
Yeah, so it's really, a lot of it's minor stuff, but it's when you, when we, it's, I really wish that we would, the deadline for approving school budgets would be in July because there's so many things that come down the pike after June 30th. But the first five sections there is just dealing with the special education, Part B funds, it's a grant. And there's, if you can see, there's really not a whole lot of money difference, it's just money moved around. And so we're just trying to, when Susan gets these memos from DESI, we're just trying to make the numbers be accurate early on in the, in the, in the school year so that we're not looking at, you know, skewed numbers. So those first five is all dealing with the Part B, Special Ed. And the second part there is, actually, if you go down where it's rental equipment, the Great Circle, that's more sped money that was changed with the grants that dealt with, just with students publicly placed. The next section is early childhood. That's the same situation, trying to make those numbers match. I think the big one down there, right above where we start with revenue, is the very last item on the expenses. That is where we did actually add $10,000 for, to be able to fund that SRO. So that is going to be, that is an addition for the SRO. And I did actually get the contract from the city just right before the board meeting. So that'll be officially approved with the city at the September meeting. So we're going to move forward with that, with that it really being officially approved. So on the revenue side, it's very similar, money just moving around. Really no change on some of them. If you look at the number on the working budget and then the number on the new working budget, they're staying the same on some of them, on most of them, actually. The only thing that was reduced was that vocational enhancement did get, DESI came in, and they did reduce that by a certain percentage, like 20%, yeah. So just changes. The only thing really new was the SRO.
Okay, thank you. I'd like a motion to approve budget revision, number one. I have a motion?
Second.
Have a second, discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, back to Dr. Johnson, he's got quite a few things to report on, so.
Yeah, quite a few, but nothing extensive. So we're going to start out, just, we had an unusual summer school, a July summer school. Usually, we do our summer school report before now. But since we had a July summer school, I asked Mr. Webster to come up with just a brief report.
Just wanted you guys to kind of have a chance to look at the numbers we had. Obviously, this year, we were down in numbers. You can see the first, the graph there is just summer attendance for each grade level broken down. And then the district as a whole, obviously, usually in the middle of it, you see a little bit of dip, that's pretty normal. But overall, you can see that our numbers are really good. Hopefully, that's an indicator of getting back to normal, getting kids in the building. Specific numbers are there on page two if you are interested in the numbers. You'll see the high school obviously is running a little bit high there. When you do it virtually, it just, it's calculated different for ADA purposes. If they finish it and it's virtual, you only get 94% attendance for the kid, since it was virtual. And that's kind of listed there, but any questions?
Did you do the graph?
I did.
Proud of you.
I tried hard for you, Mr. Rapp.
All schools, all students in every building to get free breakfast and lunch. So that's a great thing, as long as the high school building is closed. Whenever a building is closed, DESI is making sure that's happening across the state, so. Moving on down to page, starting at 15 there, all of 15, that's just the new CDC symptoms of coronavirus. Some updates about three weeks ago for the symptoms, the things that we're looking for, so. And that is it. People are not really referring to the reopening plan, the district reopening plan so much now because each building has been doing a really good job of communicating their individual plans. So, you know, I'm sure there's a few people that would like, know more information. And we're taking care of as much as we can on social media when they ask those questions, so. Any questions about the updates to reopening? Okay. Moving on, this is the big topic, is closure challenges. And I would say for me personally, the most questions I've been receiving from staff since convocation, and actually leading up to convocation, was what if I get COVID? What's going to happen to me when it comes to my days off? Am I going to get paid? And those types of things. So MSBA did provide us a very nice leave chart and worksheet that goes over the emergency page six leave, which is EPSL. Then also, once you use that time up, which is the 80 hours or two weeks, teacher would be 10 days, then it moves into the emergency FMLA. So that's the EFMLA. We love acronyms. So that's up to 12 weeks. And according to the law, that's with some pay after you go past the 80 hours or the 10 days when we're talking about teachers. So what we did is the admin team, we came together and we discussed. Originally, our thought was, when we go 100% virtual, our thought was all teachers, all staff must be on-site to work. We know that, that it's a perception thing with public education with some people, that if people are not at the work site, that work's not getting done. Well, I can assure you, what happened in, in March, April, and May is not what's going to be happening at public schools for this upcoming school year. We are prepared. Learning will be happening, but there will be circumstances where we feel like we need to work with teachers who might be in unusual cir, unusual situations with their families or with quarantine. So the four exceptions would be childcare provider is unavailable. And that's with children, within your, your children in your household, that they may be permitted to work virtually during that time without using any EPSL or, or the emergency FMLA. If they can, which will go down below, which there will be conditions on being able to do that. So the first one is childcare provider not available. If there's a distraction at home with keeping your child, then you would automatically have to go to EPSL, which is the emergency paid sick leave. The second exception would be if you are instructed by the county that you have to quarantine. You're not going to be at school, right? So, but if you're asymptomatic, you would be expected to work virtually if it's possible, if you have the internet to be able to do that. So if you're asymptomatic, while you're in quarantine, you, we would, we would like our teachers, our staff to work if they, if that's possible. If you're symptomatic, obviously you're sick, so we don't expect you to work. The, the third one is caring for someone who's been instructed by the county to be quarantined. Very similar. In those cases, we would, we would like that person to work virtually, but it says the education staff may be permitted to work virtually when you're caring for somebody. And then obviously if that care for somebody is a distraction, then you would have to go on EPSL. And then the last one is a little bit tricky. It's the, it's experiencing COVID-19 symptoms and is seeking, this is the big part, is seeking medical attention. So you can't self diagnose and say, I think I have it. I'm going to stay home and I'm going to get EPSL. So you have to think you have it with symptoms and be able to say, I'm seeking medical attention too, and be able to prove that. To be able to qualify for, well, actually, you would, if you are seeking the medical attention, you would be able to qualify for the EPSL. So if you are not, and you do not want to get tested, you have to stay, we are expecting you to stay away and self quarantine for the 14 days. And you would not qualify for the EPSL if you do not take, do the testing. So on all those exceptions, we have a list of conditions that you can work if you are able to and not have to do EPSL or the emergency FMLA. You wouldn't have to use any days and you get paid. So if you have to be home and you qualify, the things that you have to say you are able to do is have adequate high speed internet at home or your offsite location. You will have to be available for duty hours of your building. So if the principal needs you for something, for a meeting on Zoom or whatever, you need to be available. You can't say, hey, I'm not, I'm doing something else. I think that was kind of one of our concerns back in the spring is that there were, there were times where people were disconnected and we weren't able to get ahold of people. And, you know, they were being paid, and that was a little bit frustrating. So you're going to need to be available during the day. The next thing is professional attire while you're teaching. You know, we're not going to be in PJs. You know, we're going to be teaching, we're going to look like professional teachers while you're, because your, your students and your, and in many cases, parents are going to be watching you teach. And we, remember, we're talking about 100% virtual situation. You will secure an offsite classroom setting without distractions. Maintain parent logs, student logs, which we have, and we, we've shared with our, our admin team. And I'm pretty sure that the teachers have had these logs and they were working on them. Is that, is that right? The teachers have these logs? Probably can't hear me. And then we have the, what we will be doing is we've talked about all these exceptions and these conditions. And if there are issues with the internet, if there are issues with distractions, and we will, we will know, there will be complaints, parent complaints, student complaints. We will know. And then we will then say, okay, this isn't working. You need to come back unless they're on quarantine, obviously. If they're on quarantine, then they just have to take, use their EPSL or emergency FMLA. We will not be using substitute teachers during a 100% virtual closure setting. We do expect our teachers to plan for illnesses in advance, have pre-recorded lessons. And then if they don't have the pre-recorded lessons, to appropriately communicate their lessons to the students and parents. And at any time, we can ask them to be available for any school business during the workday. So things are completely different from the spring. We have, we've had a lot of questions and we verbally have communicated this to our staff, but we haven't really sent this out in writing yet. I wanted to go over this with the board so that you could see it before we send it to the teachers. So these are our conditions. Those principals will be helping with situations where we approve that they can work off, offsite virtually. And then at the same time, the principals will be making their recommendations. These, these are to us on if a staff needs to return. And so then we would approve that. The main thing, the reason we're doing all this is because we understand that there are some people that have unique situations with childcare especially. And they might, they, they don't have anybody for their, during the full closure, they cannot come to the site. Our goal at the very top of this document, our goal is for everyone, we would like people to be onsite. Because it's being together, working together. We can take the safety precautions with wearing the masks, temperature checks. Being together is the best way to work. But in some cases, we might not be able to do that. And even with the high school especially, and their unique situation right now, there are some case, we almost want some people to be home because we have, we don't have a lot of space. We have six classrooms that are not, we're not even able to get into. So that, we, we will be having some people working from home just to start out. So it's kind of nice to see how it's going to work. And this is, this is what all schools are grappling with across our country right now, is trying to make this work and to also be fair to our employees. So this is, I think, a good faith effort. Will this be exactly how it will be enforced? There's probably going to be some things that we'll have to adapt and change as we go. Because that's basically how we're doing with, that's what we're doing with everything, is when we get a curve ball, we have to adapt and make that modification. So are there any questions about this plan? Because we can make some changes to it. This has been approved by our attorney. Okay, there's nothing to be approved. It's just that this is going to be our, our procedure for dealing with any of these scenarios. If there's any modifications, any major modifications, I'll let the board know, so.
Have we ran into any problems with the high school getting ready to go virtual for however long, like any teachers currently that would run into troubles already with?
I mean, there's been some issues, and I would let Joe and Field answer that question. You could give some examples of what you've already done.
Just.
Yeah.
I did have to ask a couple.
Hey, Joe, I, I just got a, probably shouldn't look at my watch, but I just got a text from someone watching from live stream, and they said they can't hear you. If you could come to the podium. I'll tell you who it is later. I'll tell you who it is later, so you can get him.
I don't need to run through all that again, do I? No. But, so that, that was the biggest thing was just space, but we've got that solved. And the majority of our teachers, and the two that I asked not to come in are in the hallway that we can't use anyhow, so. Any other? But I think we're ready to go.
It's been, it's been quite, just a, we just don't know what to expect from day to day. And I'm telling you, the high school administration and staff, they really have been so positive and helpful to the parents. I think a lot of parents, when we first put the information out there, obviously that is very unpopular to announce that you're going to start virtually. When 90% of parents were supportive and they wanted their kids to be seated. So they were disappointed. They wanted to be in school. But once we were able to explain the opportunities, they're still opportunities, and how we're planning on helping those students that are struggling with not being able to be here. The parents have been very, I think, happy for the most part with the way that they've been working with them, and they've done a great job. I appreciate you guys. Okay, moving on. Substitute teacher shortage. So there's been a couple, there's been actually something new since this has been posted. But the substitute teacher shortage, I don't know how much it's going to help us out. We don't have just a ton of retired teachers who want to be in the schools with COVID right now, with the pandemic. But it's eliminated the 550 hour restrictions for PSRS, so they can work more than that. Had to all be reported. Just recently, the State Board of Education, this is not on here, but they approved that anyone with a high school diploma now that does 20 hours of virtual training can also substitute teach. So I don't, that's, we're really struggling across the state to find substitute teachers, people willing. I think that they tried, they thought maybe the, the retired teacher, reducing the restrictions or eliminating the restrictions would help. But there wasn't a lot of excitement because there's not a lot of people that really just want to come in to schools right now, right? So now college kids, they might want to do it. And students that you have to meet some criteria, fingerprint and all those things. But this is a unique time, so I got to say, a unique time. So how does the board feel about that, that new approved thing at the state for 20 hours of virtual for anyone that has a high school diploma? I mean, we will make sure the background check is there, but.
Say, how do we feel? Like, are they going to mark, like, I mean, if they pass their substitution test, I mean, they're going to be in your pool, correct?
Well, you know, we, we, we approve them as a board, so. That's, if, I mean, I, I think most schools are excited that there's going to be a new pool of, of candidates, so.
I, I think my question would be, how do you get more? If there is a shortage, how do we get more? Do we go to S and T and post flower, flyers? Do we go to ECC? I mean, what, what do we do there?
I don't know. Graduate seniors early so that they can just, yeah. I think we're going to be fine. I think, I think that once we get schools started and people realize that if things are good and we don't have outbreaks in the community, it's, it's going to be safe. So it just takes a while at the beginning. So we'll stay on top of that. The IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act Determination Letter, this is something that comes out every year. We met with flying colors, the only thing that we didn't have a perfect score on, which every school in the state didn't have a perfect score on because there were no tests. So that was a very good report. Just to let you know, the ASBR report was officially submitted to Desi with no edits, so that's a good thing. Susan works hard on that. And so our, that basically, what that is, is it matches our fund balances for what the budget that was approved by the board. So, and it, it came out good. And next we have the aspiring administration program. And this is something that last year we talked about, that we would like to, to do a better job at motivating and, and giving our staff members who would, would like to be in administration someday, opportunities to lead. And we don't have jobs, you know, stipends for them. We don't have money for them, but we do have opportunities. And the cream rises to the top and those, when you have, when you provide those people opportunities. So Tim was, I asked him to come up with a, a plan, a program, and another, another great slideshow here, John.
Oh, I've already looked at it. I'm impressed so far.
Didn't find any mistakes?
No comment.
Okay, so with the, and I don't want to go over the whole thing with you guys because it is pretty lengthy unless you want me to. At the same time, kind of piggyback off what he said with the aspiring administrative program, I do, that, that's something I'm pretty passionate about as well. A couple of years back, I was given an opportunity to kind of start doing that, that type of thing, and it's worked out all right. And I think it is a opportunity to give people that are willing to and wanting to professionally grow, it's giving them that opportunity. Even if it's not at our district one day, we're giving them a chance to professionally grow, which I think, you know, that, that's the best thing you can do is let people grow. So as you kind of go through there, there, there's some requirements. You have to have your master's degree, which is what is required to be a principal in the state of Missouri. Two years minimum classroom teaching experience. And we do want people that have had some sort of leadership experience to be the ones that we're getting in initially. We're going to, we're probably going to try and cap it around maximum of four people the first year, especially since things are a little bit crazy this year. So that's what we're looking at. And we've broken it down as you get in there throughout each month, just different opportunities for these individuals to professionally grow and to find out what being administrator is like. It's an opportunity for them to do some of those things. Obviously, the first time that they are given those opportunities, they're, they're being taught how to do it. So then we kind of move through here. You can, you can see the different things that they'll be doing throughout the program. Looking ahead, there's a lot of opportunity here. If we got in a situation where we had plenty of openings or something, we could look at reformatting, possibly turning this into a multi- Um, possibly turning this into a multi-year program where some of the school districts in this area, they do that. Uh, the first year is very similar to this. Um, it's just getting your, your feet wet, teaching you what it's about. At the end of the year, you're done with this program. Uh, we could move into a situation and this could be five or six or seven years from now, but where we can turn it into a year two program, possibly where out of those four people, uh, they're then given an opportunity to move into an intern situation. That would have to be something that, uh, over my head was decided upon. That would have to be something that you guys would say, hey, this is something that we're passionate about. We want to do that. Um, and I think that would be a good thing, maybe someday to move into. One perk that, that I feel to this as well is I think anybody that completes this program, uh, down the road within our district, if there's an administrative position open, I think that we should guarantee them an interview with that. Uh, nothing more than a guaranteed interview, but I think that's how you treat people that do things that go above and beyond and show you that they have those leadership abilities. So that was something that we, we were going to attach to it as well. Are there any questions? At the bottom, you guys can see the forums, uh, with the forums, uh, we're going to hold it pretty similar to a, uh, principal interview. I've asked the other, the buildings to, uh, either one of the head principals or the assistant principals will sit with me that any of the candidates will be interviewed. Um, after the interview process, that's how we'll select the four. There's a scale there. We'll rate people, the highest four scores go on. This is not something that, oh, I didn't make it. I don't have a future here. It's just, guys, we can't get everybody at once. Next year, if you're interested, uh, you can be given that opportunity. Um, and like I said, I won't go over all those, but if you guys have questions, I'll be more than happy to. You know, it's a good, it's a good question. I think they should come to all of them, right? I agree with you.
They should have to have a report at every.
Yeah.
No, we don't want more reports. Okay, that's good stuff. Thank you for putting that together. Um, next we have the bus inspections and this is something that's done annually. We had a good report, uh, no out of service this year, so, uh, very good and looking forward to another good year. They, uh, I would like to compliment Copeland Bus for doing an outstanding job, uh, making tons of modifications due to COVID. Uh, with their cleaning and masks, the, their bus drivers are wearing their masks. You know, I don't think that was a real popular idea early on, but, uh, they're on board and, and they're, they're making tons of accommodations, so. Uh, very, very excited about what they're be, what they're going to be able to provide for us as far as transportation goes. Financial reports. We have, uh, first page there on revenues. There's just, I mean, a lot of, it's early in the year and you can just see the comparisons from, uh, what's realized, uh, year to date. You can see on the right side, the nineteen twenty. Uh, so anything that's out of whack, we go look at as far as percentage wise and we can explain each one of those. So if you have any question on any of these that are sticking out, uh, you can ask me now or ask me later. But a lot of it's COVID and at the end with bonds, we, we don't have a lot of bonds running through for this year as we did in the years past. So you can see a big difference in, in the money overall, so. Any questions on the financial report? Okay. And next we have a little bit of information with, uh, the facility report with West DeLuca. Anything, anything new going on, Wes, with the facilities? The live streamers would, would like you at the podium, please.
No, nothing new. Any questions? Um, I guess I'll start with what I would feel is good news, and that's the early childhood facility is. Dan, was it a successful open house this, today as far as you are concerned?
It was, I will tell you, it was awesome and the teachers were ecstatic about it, so very awesome, uh, great job.
Okay. It is not one hundred percent, we don't have substantial completion, but we do have it released to us and we are using it. Um, the construction crews are still finishing touches and there's still outside stuff to do, but I just wanted to start with, that is the positive. We are, we, there's some light at the end of the tunnel and this whole grand scheme of projects and it is nice to have that new facility and, uh, teachers are happy. It, it was stressful at times. It's, it's, we're cutting it close, getting them in there and like I said, it's still even not a hundred percent complete, but we are having school Tuesday and we're moving right along. Um, the high school project, we'll start with that. Uh, I know some of you board members took a tour this, uh, afternoon and I don't know if you have any questions from that, but, uh, things are moving along as you, the bricks going up on the front, the, a lot of steel has been erected over the, uh, atrium area, so. We are, it's getting completed. Some things are on task, some are not. I've talked to Dr. Johnson. I believe we're going to have next month, board meeting, have Branco give a update of timeline. Um, the last official timeline we've heard is completion is November sixth. Is that correct? Don't want to put you on the spot.
November, December, yeah.
November, December. So, so we will have a, but that's, that's the official date we know as of today, but we are going to ask them to come and present and show us updated timelines. Um, so that's as far as a project is concerned. Uh, do you guys have any questions with what you've seen today or anything that stuck out to you or as far as the project? Well, I'll get to the roof, which, um, is next, but. Nothing? Okay. So the new.
I'm, I'm going to ask one question.
Yes.
When are they promising that our PE gym will be ready? It was by the schedule, it was supposed to have been done at the end of May.
So that is why I'm going to have them come and they have not made any new promises other than what we've passed. You know, so it's, it's past their time. Um, the issue they ran to in the gym that I'm aware of is the, it's basically the humidity in the concrete floor that's under the wood floor. They've had to go in there and they've been grinding on it, which has also caused us some other issues with dust in our facility. But they're, they're treating it and grinding on the concrete and getting the humidity to be the proper, for the gym floor to even go in. So that, that's what, uh, I would call it a holdup. Um, so as far as a promised date, I have not been given one, so I am not going to give you one. So we, I will make sure they answer that at the next board meeting unless you want that sooner. I can for sure, I mean, I'm going to ask them, we, we've already, uh, we've told them we'd like them to present, but we haven't given them a list besides, we need new timelines. So I will make sure that is a top bullet and if I get that any sooner than the next board meeting, we will share that. Anything else as far as that goes? So the rundown on the, the new roof issue that has caused us to start the high school virtually. Um, do I need to run through how that started and everything, what? Probably, no, you guys are aware.
I think everybody knows.
I mean, the public knows.
I think we just need to know where we're going.
Okay.
From here on out.
So we had that initial, uh, structural engineer opinion of unoccupiable. And that was started through the construction manager who noticed the issue. So we took that, so, so it has a relation to do with the construction project, but it was just something they noticed because they were doing interior renovations in an area of a roof that they didn't have anything to do with. So, um, so that's how it started. We are currently getting a second and a third opinion from two other structurals, just to make sure that that is a necessary, because that, obviously it's a big deal. They said we can't be in there. And we are getting those second opinions, but also at the same time, the construction manager is helping us get roofing bids. Um, we've got some initial estimates, but no specific bids yet, so, uh, you want to share those initial, the initial, so it's broke up into four sections that makes sense on how we should replace the roof. So the worst of all areas is what we had estimated first. And if you do the math and kind of, well, this is what the rest of the, but that is based on the worst section, so. This might be a little inflated, but it was close to half a million dollars if you just take that math and kind of put it over the whole roof. But that's also saying that the whole roof was as bad as that first section, which it is not. So it, that's not an official number. That's just the initial estimates. If you do some math, worst case, half a million dollars. Um, and that's just, it's not official numbers. That's just the worst case initial estimate. So when we got that first number, it was through the subcontractor that is currently on the job doing the other roof work that we have already hired him to do. So they're already pre-committed to us for our, you know, so, um, the story I'm getting from Branco is roofers are busy right now across the state. And when we talked to our insurance, uh, appraiser, I get, what, I don't know what his term, what his title is. But anyway, he said that all over the state, he's, he says all the roofers from St. Louis area are helping him with all the hail stuff down sat, you know, so he said, so we've been told by multiple people that roofing contractors right now are just spread thin everywhere. So it's a bad time that we need to have an emergency roof replacement. So that is what we're assuming and that is what Branco is assuming on why that initial price estimate was so high. Because basically they're going to have to pull off somebody else's job to come fix. So I don't want to say price gouging, but you know, we need them. That's what cost of business is for them. They're going to have to give up something they're already doing to come to us. So that is also why Branco, they are getting two other bids, um, from two other subcontractors that are not on our project right now. Um, and also the sub that gave us the bid is also reaching out to other, uh, it, that's, so the one that gave us the initial bid was Alexander Construction. But they are, they're a, they are subbing that, so they're reaching out to other contracts. So a sub of a sub is what gave them that number. So he's looking for another sub to, so we have multiple trying to get bids and just to see where we're at to get a true cost bid. Um, so.
And at the same time, we are getting, uh, second and third opinions from struc- other structural engineers.
Yes.
From our insurance and then from independent local. And we'll get as many other opinions as possible.
So all these things are happening, so I'm getting other structure, if, maybe the two other structural engineers won't agree with the first one and then we can go another angle. Maybe it is, you know, so we're just, anything that I can think of, that we can think of, that we're, would help us get in the building, we are looking at.
Did, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Did your bid estimates come with a time estimate once we get them on the ground?
As of right now, no.
So we just have no clue.
So the initial, uh, three to four week is what Branco just like, yeah, if. That was before that we got any bid, but it was, so one, one of the ideas, we are, we already have hired Branco to replace the roof over the library. Um, so some of that material is sitting there, ready to go on our library roof. So the initial idea was, well, we already have this. We could do this other area and get it opened, you know, and that, and that, so that would have taken a few weeks because the material's here and that was the big thing. And we already have that contractor hired to do something else. It would just be like, all right, well, that's safe. We will replace that when we get other material. So we were going to steal that material and it makes sense. But then when the, we hired the, the third party inspecting company, there's more areas that are bad than just that initial area that was found.
Bad or unoccupiable?
Uh, there, so there's three stages. One is roof's fine, two is unoccupable, three is not great, but does, is, is structurally sound, fix it as soon as possible. So there was a whole nother hallway, which is actually what, so when the first section went down, it was like, okay, we talked to the high school principals and it was, we can still make this work with this one hallway down. We will do our best to make this work. Well, then after that inspection report, another whole hallway went down, unoccupiable. So that's when the six classrooms had to close and that's when it was like, and that's when the bathrooms were attached, so it was like.
So that's what I'm saying. So that hallway, do we, that second hallway, do we have enough to repair it now? Keep the first set that they've already agreed to leave unoccupiable down and, and get them back in.
So that is what we are working on. It's because of, it's a, it is just a hallway that's really, has a bad area, but it is at the crown. It's, it's a larger section. So I am, uh, trying to also get the opinion at the same time. Can this be patched in and get this hallway open with what we have? So we're, that's another avenue where what can we shore it up from the bottom? Do we have to replace the roof right now or can we just make it structurally sound? Maybe that's not the best option, but it is for us because it's the most, the quickest, you know, so, um, it might be money, okay, let's spend fifty thousand to shore it up. Well, okay, fifty thousand to start school, that, that's, that's something that probably, you know, so I'm, I'm looking for that number as well. What else is roof replacement the only option? And that's what we are getting all the opinions of the structurals and, um, they would have to help us determine that. So we were actually supposed to have something from Branco today and I did not get it.
Can I clarify one thing?
Yes.
So this is something completely separate from the construction that Branco was hired to do, correct?
Yes.
So this is, this Branco cannot charge us for anything that they are doing on this piece? They are doing this out of the kindness of their heart as far as trying to find us another roofer or what are we doing there?
So we are not, we have not added any scope to, basically, basically we are in the, the pre-talk of adding it to the contract because we have asked them for a price request, but price request does not cost us anymore. So the reason we are doing that is because they are on site. They are the quickest way to make that possible and that is what our attorney.
Yeah, our, our attorney did recommend that since they are on site, they already have the contractor, many contractors close, you know, they can get to quickly. That, uh, we should just use and we, I mean, we just talked that through. Should we use, should we allow Branco to help us? Yes, he said, yes, we'll worry, you get your roof fixed, we'll worry about everything else later.
So, so we do not have to do that by no means that, but it is, um, to expedite the process, to get it done. That is what our, yes.
Our existing subcontractor that's already on gives us a bid. Why would we not, why would we pay Branco to hire that group? Everybody's going to want to get paid.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not seeing where Branco's going to get paid.
We hired the best contractor for the group. We're going to get paid.
I've had some different conversations that we can't talk about with legal discussions that I think we're okay.
I'm just, this is structural, and everybody wants to get paid, but they're doing the work and hiring subcontractors.
Yeah, so currently they are.
We talked about that too.
No, no, because it, they don't, I mean, they're basically giving us an estimate. However, it, yes, we need to, yes, what he said.
I guess a concern I have. I guess a concern I have is if we're pulling our contractors and our material from that front part, this should not be a delay for our front part. Like the front part of the high school. We're already delayed enough because of other things that have happened.
Absolutely. This should, should not cause any delays in the project besides if they say something like, well, we, if maybe the, maybe the locker rooms, because technically we cannot be in there because it's not structurally sound and that is our fault. So.
The locker rooms and the practice gym that were done in March of last year. We, I understand that's going to be delayed. What I don't want to see is that front part that we're actually making progress on start pulling people and resources from there.
Unless we allow, unless we use the roofing material, but even that, that is just for the library and that, so no delays on the two-story.
Okay.
No. I mean, if, if, if there's delays, it would be a shock and news to me and they would have to, they would have some explaining to do. Yes, that, that would, so it would only be if we allowed them to use the material that we've already purchased for this to do that, but as far as the two-story part, no, that should not, if that comes up, then we would need to fight that, I guess you would say, because that shouldn't, it should not slow down anything. No, yes, that, that's the structural. So we're, we're going to have three by, three opinions from a structural and we actually have that third party inspection. So I mean, which is what they're using and they're going in their field verifying what the inspection, so we have multiple layers of, it's not where, oh, Branco said we need to replace this roof, so let's hire, it's, I am doing my best to make sure that they're saying what they're saying is right and not, no, there's no swindling of more money from the school. We are, if, is that what you're.
To kind of explain Wes's theory behind that, I think, is we didn't want to just bring in a second and then have a one and one because we want to make sure the kids are safe. So then you wanted to make sure we got a third, so.
Yeah, so, so one of those opinions, actually, our music insurance offered just, hey, we'll send our guy. Okay, bring, he's a structural, bring him on down, you know, so, and then we actually are paying separately for the third, which Archer Elgin out of Ralla is sending, they, I met with him today, Steve Stack, he was here. We looked through, so he will be giving us a report probably mid next week. It takes a few days for them to look at it. So and then they can also, between the three of them, they can help, well, this is what you can do and this is what you can do and this, you know, so I'm hoping that there's some, something we can, and Steve and I were talking about that today. You know, what could we do on the inside? Maybe, maybe we have to build some wall or something down the middle. I, I don't know. If, if that, if that's what needs to be done, then that's, that's an option that we're going to, we're going to look at all options and in the sake of speed for having school. But it's got to be safe, you know, so that's why the structure will tell us what we can do. So. Any other questions? Anything to add, Dr. Johnson?
This is just, I mean, horrible timing to get this 11 days before our first day of school. You know, we're, we're really trying to figure out what we can do so we can get our students back in the buildings. We don't know what the future is going to hold for all schools, not just St. James schools, but everywhere in the state. So we definitely did not want to start out in a virtual format. But we're doing everything, you know, that was possible as far as our end with not, we're not sitting back and just letting people push this around. I can assure you of that. I mean, we're doing our, with best we can. It's been pretty stressful to be honest, so.
And I do trust the, the structural engineer that made the first determination. I mean, he is our structural engineer for the project and he he understands what situation he put us in, but he also, I mean, safety, you know, I mean, that's, that's why he has an engineering degree, you know, that, that's what he, that's what he does. If it's not safe, it's not safe and a hard one to swallow and it's pain to try to figure out what we're supposed to do, but it's the reality that we have right now. So. Other facility questions besides project or the, we are going to use the facilities for high school, the ones, as Joe and Phil were saying, the facilities we do have, the old Tiger Cubs one building and the
The Christian church did make contact and, and they offered more use of the, their facility, which I thought was very nice of them to, they offered, they called, contacted us and made that offer. So that's a great, that we have another option.
Have you made decisions what you're going to do with those trailers? I know you asked and you said you were going to ask for staff input. Did you get any valuable input?
We got a couple of, do I? Value, yeah. So we got a couple of requests, but to be completely honest, I have not had time to even look at them. So it's probably, yeah, yes, that is, I don't really have an answer for that. We are gonna, we, I, yeah, we're going to get through to use them for our high school facility until the high school's open, but yes, at some point we will be, we did get, it was a club. Do you remember all?
Yeah, the, not sure, one of the high school clubs wanting to use it. Can't, I can't remember the name of the club. Pay it Forward Club?
Forward Club. We've had some storage for kitchen, kitchen storage requests. There wasn't a lot, honestly. There, there was for the Tiger Cubs one facility. So I remember your comment was, you want to say it again?
Tiger Cubs one, Mash House? I think the alt school would be a good fit there with the kitchen and stuff. You're always saying they want that kitchen and that space. I think that's a very.
That was one from early on, you know, we know. But then you made a comment about maybe we should get rid of them. Yes.
Oh, I think we should haul them off. Yeah.
Yes. So we, we definitely, I, I want to, we will weigh through those soon as we're done using them for high school primary, I guess, is how we should look at that. The primary school, then we should probably really look at, look into, do we need to upkeep these for a club? Do we need, you know, that, that decision has to be made. So.
We're going to have to do an evaluation and we're working on the C SIP with the action steps and so you know, we're just going to have to, that's going to be something the board's going to have to help make decision on. If you, whatever you want to do, that's what we'll do, you know? That's a board decision.
Anything else? Thank you all very much.
Okay, moving on with the MSBA reports. The only thing they're talking about is coronavirus and reopening plans at the state level. They did talk quite a bit about EPSL, that's in everybody's vernacular now. And the EFMLA. And they just defined a lot of that in the, in the plan, just try to help us out as we plan on how we're going to handle situations. And I just wanted to reassure that all schools throughout this state have, their emphasis is to make our return to schools in a virtual setting effective and where students are meeting the requirements of the district in learning, much different than in the spring when we closed and we weren't ready for it. So some great information with the pandemic recovery considerations document from MSBA with the Centers for Education Safety. And then they, since last month, they did officially announce that the annual conference is going completely virtual, which includes the delegate assembly, which is completely virtual. So anyone who is planning on participating, I'm assuming you, if you're already registered, you can stay registered and if you want to do some virtual participation, just let Shannon know and probably can register on your own. So. But that is it. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. That's it for open session. We've got a couple of things we need to discuss in closed session, so I'd like a motion to go to closed session.
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion? And have a second. Those in favor, raise your hand. Have everyone for, no opposed. We are going to go to closed session.